Out there for a week because they don't take it in. And are you guys prepared for the additional work? Because I'm kind of with trustee Guyer. We did this because of the brush pickup. This really reduced our brush pickup. So, we're going to implement increasing our brush pickup to help offset this? Or are you prepared because I'm no longer going to bag my leaves? I'm not going to rake them into the parkway. Because I bag them now.
That was my next question. It's how, how does this, these half a million dollar vehicles? How do they help us with this, with this leaf pickup and the leaf waste and that? How, how does the equipment that we've provided Public Works help us alleviate some of these costs?
So, I don't, you know, this is just my opinion and my observation from, from, you know, doing our leaf collection, let's talk leaves specifically. We don't see much of a reduction in the curbside program from bags that are out. So, for example, when we drive the town and we do our observations, which we do week, every week, to see, engage, how many crews we need to put out, how much overtime we need to work Saturdays, Sundays, what have you. We are not seeing a high volume of people that bag their leaves. The majority of people utilize the curbside collection that the village provides. So, I personally don't see a drastic increase in the amount of leaves that are going to be put out to the curb because I feel like it's a highly utilized program now.
So, um, if I don't go to the public library, I'm still paying, paying a library tax. Right? So, whether or not I put my lawn clippings out every week or, or I don't, there, that's a fee to, to the rubbish, the disposal pickup. I'm not in favor of reducing the level of service that we're providing. And this sounds like we're reducing the level of service. Because yeah, it was wonderful not having to worry about stickers. Do I have them, do I don't? Before I mow the grass, I've got to run and, and go, go get them. I'm not in favor of that at all. I don't like these long contract terms. And if we're talking contract extensions, why don't we have contract proposal from any other providers?
So, one of the things that, you know, when we looked at is the, the narrow amount of competitiveness in the marketplace. So, again, I, I feel like I could probably ask Katie to talk a little bit more about that.
Well, I don't want to ask Katie because she works for LRS. I'm asking you, and if it is that narrow and everybody's looking for a piece of the pie.
It's, it's narrow in the aspect that there aren't many companies that provide this service. So, again, there were some informations sent out regarding some larger waste haulers that are actually getting out of the re, the residential market because the, the money isn't there.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, that can be looked at either way. That provides opportunity for other companies to come in and make money. But again, based upon our service that we've received from LRS, the contracts, the feedback from the residents, um, feedback that I've received from board members, we felt that this was the best option. Again, can't, I cannot emphasize, again, I was here in 2017, but I wasn't as involved with the process. But I know that the cart swap-out process was a nightmare to deal with. And, and talking to other people in other communities, it's one of the hardest things to navigate. Residents get extremely upset. They don't know who to contact. There, this, you've got this new company in town. They're calling the village or the city to go through those. So, again, we feel that with the level of service that we've gotten, with the feedback that we've gotten from residents, trustees, that, that this is our proposal would be to move forward with this contract extension. As far as the duration of term, I, I, personally, we in Public Works have been moving towards longer-term contracts because we feel like we're getting better pricing in the long run. Because of COVID is a perfect example. When you saw these increases that we, that we incurred on year-to-year based contracts is really where we felt it. And again, I put up on the screen, Sugar Grove is a perfect example. When you look at their rate, their base rate, they had a seven-year contract base rate and then a renewal for seven years that they locked into. So, when you look at those rates, they're a dollar, basically a dollar less. And that's with the proposed option of the sticker program. So, if we go without the sticker program to $26, that's where you see that significant difference in the long-term contracts.
Couple of things. If we were, sorry, you can go if you need, if you want to. If we were to try and solicit bids from others, it would be a formal process of which LRS would submit, Groot would probably submit or whatever. Anybody that's out there would submit. And the end, the rate that we would pay at the end of the day would not be this.
No.
It would be more than this.
We're, we're confident that it would be more than this.
So, I, raise your hand here if you bag your grass, just curious. I don't, every week, do you bag your grass? Oh, that's right.
But I'm, I'm probably the one person on the board who, who is in that situation where we don't have the stickers because I have an HOA and we have landscapers come and take care of that. So, I'm the opposite of what you're saying. You know, why should I be paying more money?
Right. It's, it's, it's like an à la carte process.
Unless my landscapers can get the stuff.
But it's, but it's again, it's the same for everybody, right? We do it for all the residents, not just because this particular neighborhood does or this particular neighborhood doesn't.
I think if it was the vast majority of residents that did utilize the bags to, for their grass, I don't know, leaves, you guys bag your leaves? I just take them to the curb.
No, I take them in the corner.
If it was the vast majority of residents that did that, the pricing to go from stickers to no stickers would be much closer. So, keep in mind that this is the bill, this, this gets shown up on your water bill. So, over the next, over this same cycle, the water bill for residents in Montgomery is going to like drastically increase.
Right.
So, as, as painful as I think it's going to be, utilizing stickers or conveying to those that use stickers, that you're just paying for your service. We did this to keep your bill down. If you mulch your yard, like we should probably be encouraging folks to do more frequently, we're just trying to keep your bill down. I think that is a stellar message as opposed to, you know, the status quo. And so, we're paying a lot more, starting in '24, going all the way to '23. I do appreciate the seven years with the extension options. We've done that on a bunch of different things now where we have the option to extend things. I see that as nothing but a benefit to taxpayers. We've witnessed that on both ends of this. So, a, as painful as I think it will be for all of my friends and my cul-de-sac, I think I can convince them that we're doing what we can to keep your tax bill down and you're just going to pay what you use.
What, do either of you have any data on what percentage of the homeowners use the, the, the yard waste bags on every, any given week?
I wish I did. I only have tonnage. So, um, it, you know, for example, I have a, there's a home in Sugar Grove. They put out 62 bags, you know, one time we counted. So, it just depends on the home. I don't think you have that in Montgomery. It's a different, you know, kind of a neighborhood, I suppose. But one thing I do want to say, you know, even at the $26, even if you just went with the 26, and I know that's a hike from where you are, but because of the seven-year contract that you had, if you didn't, if you went back two years and we were to look two years ago at the pricing, and anybody that looked at the pricing, it would have gone up, you know, significantly at that time. So, even at the $26, it's very low on the, for the comprehensive program that you have, just so you know. So, it's a $54 a year difference for residents from where we are, you know, the proposal with the stickers. So, it just depends on what, you know, you, you think in your neighborhoods. I guess just kind of try to picture in your mind what you see in your neighborhoods. As far as bags going out, I will tell you, my thought is, just from being around Montgomery, knowing this village pretty decent, that you probably don't have as many people putting bags of garb, of, of yard waste out. It's, it's mostly leaves we're trying to get out. A lot of people will mow over and, you know, they don't, they're mulching. And that's what we do find. And, you know, the, the areas that are heavy are covered. So, there are no stickers during those heavy weeks where people do want to bag and put their leaves out, you know, if, if it's, you know, the village isn't there to provide the service. That's what we're hoping to work and I significantly increase that volume for that reason.
What?
But that still doesn't make sense to me. Because you're, we're increasing the bag pickups for leaves during the same time that the village is vacuuming leaves.
It's actually yard waste, organics. So, it's just if you put your, you know, a brush out or something that they're not collecting, that the village is not collecting essentially. That's what it is, that helps.
Mark, what, you said there, there were two time periods, spring, some period in the spring and this period in the fall. What are the time periods?
So, I don't, I, I'll have to look again in the contract, but I'm, in the proposal, I'm pretty sure it does not stipulate spring and fall, it just stipulates two weeks. So, the village could choose to use that two weeks in the fall if we felt that that was more advantageous, or we could split that into one week, spring, one week, fall. So, again, it provides us a little latitude on how we want to use those two weeks.
If I'm a resident, and here, here's my conundrum. I, like I said, I'm a landscaper. I don't mow my own lawn, right? So, I'm, the yard waste bags don't really affect me. But I'm thinking about, say it's 15% of the homes in Montgomery that put out yard waste bags, right? Now, they've got to go through that process of getting a sticker, which is inconvenient. If we're going through and we're doing a two-week period, as a resident, non-village board member resident that doesn't know how things are, are generally working, how do I know in the spring of, okay, I got to put a sticker on this? Or, or is our week in the spring, our, our week in the summer, is it a week in the fall? How are we going to convey that to residents so they know that they don't have to do that?
So, yeah, that would fall on the village as well as LRS through our campaigns, through our website, through social media, as well as, you know, LRS has a designated webpage for the Village of Montgomery residents. So, obviously, we would have to have a predetermined amount of time ahead to be able to get that notification out to residents. And again, this process being new, you know, I would have envisioned that the first year we would kind of go through that little growing pain to figure out how we want to manipulate those two weeks. But then moving forward, I feel like, you know, we would get something established to where it's fairly routine. But again, I mean, we've talked about this a lot, or I talk about it a lot. Leaf collection is a very difficult program to accommodate people because it's so dependent on the weather. It is critical that that time period that we have to allot to pick up leaves when we transition from, you know, summer to fall and then fall to winter is a very brief period. And we do leaf collection from the last week of October to December 1st. It's a tight crunch. You know, again, I mentioned what we're, we look at, we, we, we're out daily doing our observations to figure out crew sizes. We can run two crews. Do we run crews morning, day, night? Do we run crews Saturdays and Sundays? So, those are a lot of things that go into that, those programs. So, we, we try our best to do the best we can. But again, if we have an abnormally warm fall, a lot of times that's critical to us. And then when we get that quick change from fall to winter, again, most of our vehicles are, are multi-purpose vehicles. So, they're used for leaf collection and then we transfer those right over to snow and ice operations. So, that, that does make things difficult. And obviously, once we get snow, which we did this year in the program, it makes it difficult for the machinery to pick up because of that added moisture. So, there's just so many little things and little factors about, and we, we've gone through this in the past about, you know, I know when I first started at the village, there used to be arguments, we do brush collection two weeks too early. Or then the next year, they'd say, well, you're two weeks too late because it's all dependent on the weather. So, as soon as it warms up, people want to get out. So, having a predetermined, established week can make it very difficult. But again, it's going to be difficult to change that and fluctuate it because we just don't know and we need that lead time to be able to, you know, notify residents when they need to pick up. So, that's something that would be new that we would have to work through.
And one more thing I wanted to point out, the stickers don't expire. So, that's important because if I buy a stack of 20 stickers now, you know, and I'm, I'm start to run low, you know, if I go out at five, I mean, and they run into the next year or the next year, they're still good. So, that's a really big, significant factor in that as well.
When you do, when you do programs like this where you transition from no stickers to stickers, do you, how do you roll that out? I mean, do you, do the municipalities mail out the first two to every resident or just tell people you got to go buy them somewhere?
Yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll send, we'll create a new brochure. It'll have all the details in there of exactly what, where to go and what to do and what it's needed for. And then, you know, we'll have it very well organized before, you know, any of that goes out, obviously. So...
Okay. And do, do most municipalities, when they have the two weeks that we're talking about, do that one week in the spring, one week in the fall? Or is it really like two spring weeks?
So, you have four weeks. I want to be clear on that. You have four full weeks. And so, you have two weeks you can use in the spring. I mean, you, that was just kind of like what we talked about. So, I mean, it can be however you want to use it. If you want to use three weeks in the fall and one week in the spring, it doesn't ma, make a difference to us. You know, so that's, yeah.
It's perfect.
So, I just ran rough numbers for, because again, I'm a two-bag-a-week lawn clippings person. I have three, I have two dogs and they drag the grass into the house, so I don't want it in my carpet.
How many cats do you have, Doug? We got a rule against that.
One cat.
I'm just kidding.
And a rabbit. I got, I got an extra kid if you want one. So, I just ran some just rough numbers based on, you know, time and stuff. So, it cost me $130. And if I did the $26, it's $76. So, to trustee Bowman's point is, yet the rest of the community is actually subsidizing me because I choose not to mulch my lawn for my own personal preference. So, as much as I don't like the idea of the stickers, I kind of had Nap, I used to live in Naperville and we did stickers every week on our garbage cans. So, the fact that we don't have to do that is a bonus. So, I've kind of coming off of that a little bit about, you know, keeping that cost down long-term.
But again, municipal government, we subsidize different levels, different entities, whether it's a park district, a library district, a school district. We all pay into things, not necessarily that we, we use them or we didn't. And I'm having a hard, what I'm struggling with, and everybody here knows you, it seems like, but I, you know, so, sorry, I don't, don't take it personal, but even in my other board worlds, when we extended contracts as a board, we also saw what we were comparing against. And I'm, I'm hearing that there's not a whole lot of competitors, but I have a huge issue or conflict here just extending a law, especially a seven-year contract with a company without knowing what anybody else has to offer to this village.
Yep.
I, I mean, if you, if the majority of board wants to do it, that's great. But I, I'm not going to vote to approve a seven-year contract renewal without knowing what else is out there.
So, we've done this, we've, and I, and I don't fault you for having that opinion. We've done this for several things. The, the one thing is, last time we went out for RFP for the waste, I think waste is a different animal. I, you guys can, it, it's not, you know, like we're purchasing widgets or whatever it is that we're doing, design services. This is just so unique to get the dollar, the dollars that we want from, let's say, Groot, if you wanted somebody else to look at it. I think would be much, much more of a robust process to get real numbers and they would be more.
And they also, they also don't offer the same services that we do. So, you would be reducing, you would not have the same home collection programs that you have now. You might get e-waste, but you won't have the HHW and that. And then also, you know, keep in mind, we have the portable restroom company, street sweeping, although that's not tied into this. And I totally understand your seven-year, and I want to be honest with you, our company was like, you know, we don't do seven-year contracts anymore. Because, you know, this is a great example, actually, the Village of Montgomery. You know, we were probably upside down on this before. So, even at the 26, it, you know, it's a jump when you're looking at it from this perspective. But the fact is, you know, for the same services in another village not too far away, it's $37 a month for the service, just for perspective. So, there, if you look at comps and you're welcome to go out, and I was sharing with them, you know, I mean, it's no secret, Waste Management has, or WNO, they have it in their third quarter report from last year where they say, you know, we're, we're, there's no profit in the residential, we're going into commercial. And that's because, you know, they pretty much have capitalized on the market and I have to be careful what I say here, but, you know, they own a lot of the landfills, you know, throughout the United States. And so, if you own the landfills, that's kind of where all the money's at. So, you know, we're, we're putting a lot of money into the labor. I, I'm sure you are all aware of the year of the strikes that we just went through. The Teamsters were part of that. We, you know, $4 an hour increases, we're talking. You know, everything from China's national sword forward has been just, you know, a lot. So, realistically, even the $26 is significant, is a great number. So, I did my best for you. So, I'm just saying, if you do determine to go another route, and then, you know, I don't know what would become after that, you know? Just, just being totally upfront with you about that because it's, it's a risk. There's a time to go out for bid and a time not to. Not every time you go, the Village of Lisle is another good example. I went to them and said, you know, it's a different process for me if I have to go to, to, you know, and to my FPNA group and say, hey, you know, we're, we're looking at an RFP here, it's a different process. The, everything we do is different than a renewal. Right now, you know, we don't look at it the same. I know that something may sound strange, but we have different processes in our industry for those two things. So, just keep that in mind.
On to, to the taxpayer, the resident who's currently utilizing these services, they, with the exception of the stickers, will see no change in the amount of service that they're getting.
Correct.
And when we, when we did this originally, if I'm not mistaken, and Teresa, you'll remember this, we reduced the residential garbage bill by like 17%.
We, we did in, in...
From what we were paying.
Trustee Bowman, to, to kind of give you a little bit of background too, I think, I don't think, I know when we had, when it was DC, when they came, because they were a new company and we were really nervous about taking a chance with them. A lot of that negotiation, we got a lot of extra services, which have now been rolled into this renewal, if, just to give you a little bit of the background there. And, and my concern, based on what trustee Marisak is saying too, so, could you go back a couple of slides where you taught, where you were showing the, I think it was, the, yes, that's what I want to see. So, there's still going to be an, an annual increase to the end user for this. So, 4.7 per year. Is that then to get us kind of where we should be paying? And, and where I'm going with this, same thing when, and this is going back ways to when we started, we had the lowest water rates around and we had to start raising them so we could put the money back into our infrastructure. And as we were, you know, now they kind of go each year and we get pushback on that. But we were pretty, pretty behind and we had some really low rates for our residents. So, my concern here is if we jump to that 26, that's a big jump for our residents and, and we will hear about it. But now we're going to go up 4.7 per year? That, we're going to hear it. We will definitely hear about it.
Well, you know, there's a couple of things to factor in. You know, when we started with DC, I actually started with Dan Christensen. He was a colleague of mine and I knew him from somewhere else. It worked out. I actually started on the day your contract started, but I had nothing to do with the rollout, I will just tell you that. And at the time, of course, you know, he was a non-union company. And in, if you are in the Chicagoland, you are not going to be able to continue being a non-union garbage company ever. They were definitely going to strike that. And so, we, you know, that changed a lot overnight. And that would be for any company coming in. You have health, welfare, pension, now, you know, that. And that's, that's, so to answer your question, yeah, I mean, we do need to get it to where it needs to be.
Sure.
Because it's, otherwise, it just isn't worth it for us. I mean, or any garbage company, I can promise you that. I'm certain, you know?
Yeah. Because then I can see that, you know, if, let's say we do the, the contract with you or, or let's say we don't and we have somebody else come in and it's going to be a big jump either way, there's going to be a big jump. If we do the seven years with LRS and say, okay, no, we're not going to renew at that time, there's still going to be a big jump because we're on the lower end. Am I correct in saying that?
I mean, if, if we didn't do the increase, then yes. You know, if we, but the way that it's fixed now, you should be good. No matter, you know, at the end of this, you're, you're going to be, you know, compare, you know, more comparable to other communities. But you'll still be below, I will tell you that, even at the 4.7 for all the services that we're providing. Because it's the whole enchilada. You have a great program.
Right.
So, and part of it is, you know, even, even doing the events, which were great for community outreach and everything, you know, I love to do those. I came to every one of those, you know? But the fact is, you know, a lot of residents weren't able to use that. So, you know, I actually developed the HHW and e-waste program for Lake Shore. So, I had Montgomery in mind. I rolled it out to you as soon as we rolled it out, you know? Because, and now, you know, it's a little more controlled. It's still very expensive. You know, we use Clean Harbors as our, as our HHW service provider. That's not an inexpensive service, but we're doing it legally, properly. And, you know, it's insured and you are safe because you wouldn't want a company to come in here and not, you know, provide the service the way that it needs provided with the security of, you know, a, a company like a Clean Harbors or, and Lake Shore. So, thank you.
Here, go ahead. I, here's how I would, I, during these conversations now, where I was against the sticker program, I'm, I'm done subsidizing Doug. He's going to have to cover his own costs. And I think that's the way that we explain it to the residents. It's all, it's not for Doug anymore.
I don't pay my house, so I don't need paint picked up. I mean, it's...
Well, it, it's, I don't use the, the yard waste bags. If you use a yard waste bag, you're going to have to pay for it, right? I, so we're going to have to explain to the 15 or 20% of the residents that use bags, we've been subsidizing you, we, we need to get this corrected. You're now, you're, you're paying your own way. Because the 85% of the population, it, it's not fair to them, right? I do want to see no waitlist on the senior. I, I will vote for a, a seven-year contract extension as long as we get all the seniors on that, there is no waitlist on the seniors. They, they all go into that program.
What is this, what is the requirements to be a senior? Is it 65?
50?
65.
It just requires that they live at the property and that they're 65 years of age.
Got it.
At least one resident in the home.
Yes. At least one resident in the home is 65 years of age.
And do they have to renew that?
They do not. Once they're part of the program, they remain on the program until the property turns over.
Got it. Because we have record of that.
And that's a discount.
I'm sorry?
They receive a discount.
Yes. They receive a 10% discount.
Okay. So, that, that's yours. Doug, Ben, anything?
Yeah. I'm perfectly okay with the sticker program. We did it once before. I, I bought them when it was necessary, only when I was doing tree trimming. I mulch my grass, so, you know, I don't really have the issue. So, yeah, I'm, if it keeps the cost down, I'm okay with the sticker program. But I did have another question for Mark. Street sweeping, is that a separate contract?
So, that is a separate contract. We, in fact, we just went out for an RFP for that. And so, we're doing our analysis of the RFP.
Okay. I just saw it in the bottom, so I wanted to make...
So, one super random comment, and I think I mentioned this too once, is years ago, before DC Trash, we would get like a robocall. Basically, can we get more robocalls?
Yeah.
Because I don't get those anymore and I missed the garbage day.
Yes. So, we are developing, so because of you, I wouldn't. And then, um, we had some change in the marketing, but we're actually developing a system for communities like this. So, if you want to be informed, you, you can be.
Perfect. Because now I just have to rely on my neighbors to tell me.
Oh, yeah.
They, yeah, you know, and then I missed...
The mayor can't figure that right.
Not kidding. Like the day after Thanksgiving, I missed garbage day. So, you don't have to be a genius to be the mayor, so...
I'd rather be the guy that puts it out two days early.
I know. It was bad. So, I fixed it.
I've, I've got a few things. Number one, I agree, you guys do a great job.
Yeah.
We appreciate everything you do. I'm glad to hear about the four weeks because I was going to ask about that because I would Um, I'm glad to hear about the four weeks, because I was going to ask about that, because I would like two weeks in the spring and two weeks in the fall, because different things, you have to trim at different times. And one week is just too narrow. Weather's bad, people are on vacation or whatever. The two weeks I think works a lot better. Um, for trustee Bowman's benefit, you know, I've been around for a long time, so I have a lot of history. And one thing that I don't think anybody's really driven home is before DC Trash, when DC Trash came in, they were trying to get into the market, so they gave us a very attractive, very attractive rate. So it was so attractive, because at that time, we had weekly brush pickup, which was a burden on Public Works. We didn't have the personnel to do weekly brush pickup at the time. We didn't have enough equipment to weekly brush pickup at the time. We, um, we had this sticker of our paper bags. Um, we didn't have E-Waste, we didn't have a lot of everything and the cost was much higher. So when DC Trash came in, we reduced our cost. We, we did away with the, um, uh, two annual pickups so people could put out bulk items and as much trash as they wanted. We had a lot of problems with that where scavengers would come into town and just roam the streets of town and pick through the garbage and just make a huge mess. We received a lot of complaints on that. Um, so we received unlimited garbage. Uh, every week we received unlimited brush, leaves, whatever you could put in a, in a paper bag. And we reduced the manpower at Public Works and we reduced the cost of the residents. So having said all that, and trustee Sperling's point, I mean, we've been in a really, really good position. If not for DC Trash and the attractive contract they gave us, we would probably be paying a lot more and residents would have less services. Um, I don't have a problem going back to the sticker program, but I would like us to go back to monthly brush pickup. Because part of that is, you know, as the trees have matured and stuff, and especially in the old part of town, you know, people, maple trees and stuff like that, there's always.
You want Public Works to go back to monthly?
Correct, Public Works, yes. Because there's always something, and it's, it's very convenient now, even me, you know, you get a sucker or something come out or whatever, yeah, you know, you start trimming. And then you have a small pile of brush. I just would throw it out, you know, bundle it, throw it out or put it in a, in a paper bag. Uh, I don't want to pay 250 to do that and I don't want that bag sitting around, you know, my yard, um, you know, from one week or one month to the next as I fill it up. So, um, you know, we have additional manpower now, we have the equipment at Public Works. I think we could, if we're going to make people start paying for bags, I think we have to offer that service to our residents again where they can, once a month, uh, trim and, and put out their brushes as they see fit. Um, one thing I did notice in all of this is, um, the service breakdown. And I, I didn't realize we were doing this and I, I have a problem with this for several reasons. And this would be a way to reduce costs of residents. I didn't realize we were charging residents for Montgomery Fest services on their monthly trash bill. Uh, it's just 36 cents a month, but you know, we've, we've always said in the village, we put on the fest at no cost to the residents because it's, it's all through donations. Well, with this program here, there is a cost to the residents. So I mean, I, like I said, it's not a lot. It's 36 cents a month. I don't feel that we should have the residents pay for the Montgomery Fest services. I think that should be paid out of the fest funds. And the village sites, is, is that included in this also? So what's the cost of the village sites per, per month?
I don't know offhand. Um, you don't have a tremendous amount. You know, it's not significant enough that I listed it in here. And just to be clear, it's, I listed it as Montgomery Fest Services, but it's actually for all of any of the festivals. It's for everything, everything that we give you.
Yeah, we, I, I feel we should just be paying that out of, out of a budget line item, out of the, the fest or the, whatever it is. It's an expense for that. Um, I don't think we should make residents pay for that. And the village leaf disposal and the transfer in the trailers, that's part of our leaf program. We shouldn't be charging residents monthly for that either. Uh, again, a little bit of history on that is the village used to allow leaf burning. And many years ago, we had a resident, um, Eloise Sullivan, um, who charged, uh, a campaign to eliminate leaf burning because she was very asthmatic. She lived on Sherman. And when the board passed that ordinance, one of the caveats to that was is that the village would, um, acquire equipment to pick up residents' leaves and would not charge residents any additional cost for that. And that was, and that was a trade-off at the time. Um, and, um, it was decided to, to suck up, I mean, we, there was like three or four different options and, and the village and the board picked up the option of the, the vacuuming. Um, so I don't agree with the 27 cents being passed on to the homeowners either. That should just come out of our, uh, of our leaf, uh, program, um, that we charge. That would reduce, you know, what's that, can reduce 60 cents a month? 63 cents? I mean, again, it's not a lot, but at least we're taking that out and then whatever the cost of the village sites and stuff. I think, you know, and even go a little bit further back, residents used to not pay for garbage. And Mr. Dre Zoffel and I had this conversation when he was a finance director. And at the time, I told him, I said, this is, you're raising people's property taxes in a backdoor way. It's because right now, we are providing garbage services and no additional cost is paid out of our, out of our taxes that we pay. And if you are going to start billing people, it's just like raising your property taxes. And, um, you know, he had told me at the time, well, the village is allowed to pass on the cost of contracted services to residents that solely benefit the residents. So these costs for the garbage pickup, I don't, I don't have a problem with. But these other costs, Montgomery Fest, the carnivals, the leaf disposal and all that, I, I have a problem with passing that cost on to the residents.
So I, I would say on the Montgomery Fest or the festival things, that's a valid comment, right? That not everybody utilizes those, but they're all helping to pay for it. Uh, I think that's like 25 grand a year that Montgomery Fest would have to pay for if we pulled it out of here. But the, the other one I think is a little different. That's just shifting pockets that folks are paying for. The, the village leaf disposal, if we, if we took it out of their garbage bill, we would have to pay for that via the general fund. So they're paying for it anyway.
Well, yeah, but the general fund is funded by sales tax. Other people are, are paying for that, right? Anybody who, anybody who shops in the village is paying for that. And again, not everybody uses a leaf service. Some people mulch their leaves. I, I have neighbors, they, they don't rake leaves, they just mulch them. They go out and mow every time the leaves fall, they mow and just keep, uh, keep mulching them. Um, I just don't see that as, uh, you know, I, I, going back in the history of it.
Sure.
Where previous boards, and I know this board can do whatever we want, but previous, the previous boards, when we, when they banned leaf burning, it was with the understanding that the village residents would not have to pay the cost for leaf pickup, because that was a trade-off, because there was a lot of pushback. Where people's, ah, it's just easier for me to rake them and burn them. I don't want to bag them, I don't want to do this. You know, I want to do them when I want to do them. I don't want them sitting on my grass. And so that was, that was kind of the trade-off.
Unfortunately for us, that was a terrible, if that's exactly the verbatim. It's, hey, we're going to make this vote and then we're going to create a substantial, uh, requirement that the village do this and find money for it that's not via property taxes. They shouldn't have agreed to do it in that way. I mean, i- if you want the service, you're going to need to pay for the service. It costs money just like anything else. Um, so it's a point, I mean, it's a point well taken. It was, we've talked about it before.
Right, and what I'm saying is that, that reduces the cost. So the, for the village leaf disposal is $20,000. So we would have to fund $20,000 out of the general fund to reduce everybody's monthly bill by 27 cents.
And the 36 cents is 27,000.
Yes, yeah, 26,000.
So we just increased the village's budget by almost $50,000.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not sure 36 cents times all the residents, did we spend $27,000 on?
But as a percentage.
On garbage bags and cardboard boxes and roll-offs during the fest. It's $27,000 is a lot of money.
I think it's also the portables, portable restrooms as well.
Oh, okay.
Portable restrooms.
Porta-potties is part of that.
And another way to put this too is that, you know, you're talking about increasing the budget by 50,000 or it's decreasing other line items by 50,000, which in tune to the residents is going to be a deduction in other services. At the end of the day, if we don't have the increment to pay to provide these services, something has to be cut.
Sure.
Um, at the end of the day. So I just, I just wanted to make that statement.
You know, it, it's from, from the top to the bottom, we're, we're, we're having the same argument. From sticker lawn bags, because some residents use them and some don't, to, in some respects, Montgomery Fest, where some people go, some people don't. It comes to that fact of that's the service where we're providing top-notch service for absolutely every resident in the village, whether you use the service or you don't use the service. Cause you can sit and draw on every single line item, well, let's not pay for that because I don't use that and this percentage of people don't use it. And it's, you, you can have that argument to the nth degree about things. So, and then where do you, where do you draw the line of, well, this is important, but this isn't important. Well, this is, it's important to me, but it's not important to him, but it's important to him and not, not to her. So I, I mean, and it's, in the, in the scheme of things, um, you know, you're talking about 36 cents a month. When we talk about our trash bill, even at the high end of $26 a month, well, how, two people can't go to Popeyes or McDonald's half the time and, and eat for $26 and one visit. So, um, it's really a, um, at $26 with all the services combined is still a very good deal for what is happening with the labor, the trucks, the, we're doing, whether it's, um, electronics recycling, which people say, I haven't thrown away a TV in seven years, so why am I paying for it? To hazardous waste is saying, I'm not, I, I contract everything out. I don't have those elements in my house to leaves, to, to its everything. So, I mean, it's still a very good deal if we're providing all the services. But when we start saying, well, we're, no, we're not going to do this because, you know, only 20% of the residents do it or we're not going to do this because only 18% of the residents do this. And, and then you're trying to just cutting down the level of service for a dollar a month.
Yeah.
$2 a month, $3 a month to where why not just step up and provide top-quality service?
Sure.
From A to Z.
Yeah, and the E-waste and stuff, I mean, years ago, we had a big problem in the village of, and this could be before Mark's time, of people would just take them and throw them out on dead ends, on the side of the road. Public Works every week was going out and picking up stuff off the side of the road because there was no way.
But again, Dan, and it's like, why, why should I pay 10 cents a month?
But what do you do with your old TVs?
When I could go to a recycling event that the Chamber of Commerce is going to have.
Oh, a free one, you're saying? Yeah, it's, and again, it's a convenience.
Why should I pay for your TV recycling because you can take it to a recycling event? I mean, this is the argument that we're having on all of these different items.
Well, and it's broken out. I mean, I guess that's the conversation we can have. I mean, what would you charge, what would LRS, LRS charge if you didn't have the service and you wanted to dispose a TV with you or a, or a screen or a piece of electronic equipment? What would be the, the charge for that?
So we do have a drop-off site in Elburn. Um, you would pay $25, I believe it's 25, and it will increase every year. For a TV or a computer monitor, um, there are free drop-off sites you can take advantage of with electronics. If, you know, if you, if you want to go that route, you can. Um, so it just depends on, you know, if you want to keep that as a convenience or, or not, so.
That's $25 per item.
Per item.
So if you had a computer, if you had a TV screen, each item would be $25.
Yes, and that's, you know, on the low end. So, I mean, it, that price will go up over time. Um, we just haven't raised our rates yet this year, so.
I was just going to say, 25 seems like it's like the four-year-old rate.
It was the original rate.
Yeah, it was, it was the beginning rate. And I think I've heard like 35 now for some areas, but.
So, so one thing. And the point, I'm sorry, but the point I was making with Montgomery Fest is, is we've always told the residents that we're not throwing a party on your, on your dime. This is all covered by donations. And I, you know, I just see a broken out here and, again, it's not a lot of money, but I think it's disingenuous to, to tell residents that we don't make them pay for any portion of Montgomery Fest. But then we have this little, this little fee on the, on the, uh, trash bill. That, that's all, that's the point I was making.
And again, there's multiple, it's probably missed, we, we misappropriated up there. It shouldn't say Montgomery Fest, it should say community events.
Yeah, I get that.
This is Halloween safety event, this is the River Run, this is the, uh, Street Eats Festival, this is Montgomery Fest. There are, there are many projects and, and events that we do that constitute hand wash stations, porta-pots, refus, so on and so forth. So again.
Right, and we have line items for all that. Yeah, a lot of us donated, I mean, Halloween event and stuff like that. We receive a lot of donations, so we put those on, those events on at a very minimal cost, um, to residents. And I just think it should be something covered in a line item and not passed on.
Right.
With the trash bill to, to residents.
So one comment I was going to make to trustee Bowman's is that no other thing that we deal with anywhere else in the village, we're negotiating a contract for how you handle something on your property, right? The wa- water is different. This is, this is super unique, which is why I think we're leaning towards more of the à la carte, pay for what you use. Uh, if you want to use more, that's great, it costs you a little bit more, is what it seems like folks are leaning towards on this. Um, I'd be fine leaving the Montgomery Fest services and the leaf disposal in there. Um, that's the status quo. I, but now that it's been brought explicitly to my attention, I will definitely make sure to tell folks that there, we are all helping to assist 36 cents a month towards refuse removal at special events in Montgomery. Um, and I don't think I'll get a whole lot of objection from it. Okay, uh, so process, so this is just for a fun discussion. And moving forward, if, what, what's the next step?
So the next step would be, um, obviously we'll go back to the drawing board a little bit here as far as comments and things like that go. Um, verify everything in here and then we would, you know, again, based, I, I, I guess I, I need a kind of a consensus of the board.
Oh, sorry.
As far as.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the consensus of the board is that we would seek a contract extension with LRS.
Okay.
The senior program isn't limited to 300. If we've got 15 people waiting, it's not limited to 315. If there are five other people that want to get on it, they get on it.
Can you guys work through something like that? Look and see what that proposal would look like.
And remember, everything is free if you put it out on the curb in front of Doug's house.
So I want, I just want to say thank you though. This is, you know, you have to remember too, from staff's perspective, you know, at $26, we do the à la carte as-is system or the 21, right? At the end of the day, it doesn't, it doesn't affect staff, um, from that perspective. So that's why we wanted to come forth tonight and have this discussion, to figure out what the best avenue or what you feel is the best avenue as your representatives of, of the residents of town to come forward. So we can present something to you guys that i- is something that's going to move forward. Um, RFPs are, are a lengthy process and as Katie stated, in some cases are definitely necessary. We do them quite frequently, but they are lengthy and they are a process that involves a lot of staff time. Um, that being said, that's what we're here for, that's what we get paid to do, I understand that. When we have situations too where staff makes a recommendation to move forward with, uh, existing contracts, such as we did tonight with an amendment, um, to another contractor that is doing a fantastic job, really don't have that reason, um, and based upon the data that we've collected from other communities, we don't feel that it's advantageous to go out, that's, that's what I wanted to kind of convey to you guys tonight. Again, we bring our best recommendations forward that we feel is going to be the best fit for our residents, not only day one of the contract, but all the way to the end. And as a contractor and a former contractor for myself, you're always taking a gamble and I think Steve can speak to this, when you do long-term contracts, because they can go right or they can go wrong and you're taking that gamble no matter what. Um, but it, it's hard to do that and it's all based upon present market day, where things stand and where we're at, so. Um, but I just did want to say I appreciate the feedback. I think it was good conversation. It helps us to give a direction moving forward so we can make a recommendation. Uh, because again, July seems like a long ways away, but it'll be here sooner than, than we think, so.
And just to, to reiterate, the conversation that we had tonight isn't about the services. Service is outstanding, absolutely outstanding.
I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
And I'm sure, thank, thank you, because they do a tremendous job.
Yeah, that's awesome to hear. Thank you very much.
And I'm sure at some point, um, I'm sure at some point that, uh, what's his name? I'm having a Biden moment. Um, I'm sure at some point Mark Wolf is going to want a truck out of this whole thing if we want him to do an additional collection of some sort.
That, oh, that's his name?
Haven't you had your budget?
All right, thank you, Katie, appreciate it. All right, quickly, anything you're unfinished? Sounds terrific. I'm so glad.
Got it right now.
Um, all right, we don't have anything, any executive session, because I'm getting tired. Uh, future meetings, committee, the home meeting will be canceled on February 20th, but we'll be back here on February 26th. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Przaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Sperling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
And we're adjourned.
Thank you.